All right, here we go, six o'clock. Thank you for being here. We, for those of you who've never been here before, begin every one of our meetings, hello, Ms. Ann, I see you hiding back there behind that column. You would rise, we begin every one of our meetings with prayer and the pledge. This evening, Alderman Chris Vincent is going to lead us in prayer, and Alderman Jared Crane is going to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. For this day, we thank the city for its blessings. We thank you for this opportunity to be here to carry out the city's business. We ask that you do as deeply as one of us to make decisions that are invested with this community. Amen and pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, pleased to see you. All right, we have anyone here this evening that would like to make public comment for the board? Yes, ma'am, come on down if you would, just tell us your name, and Mr. Baker can put it into minutes. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's make sure that microphone's on. Chief, you might want to walk out there, I did not check. Let's make sure it's on. All right, good evening.
Some of y'all are probably going to recognize my name here. Christine Ivy is my name. My husband and I have been trying to get a permit to build a home in the city of Brandon for quite a while now. Some of this has nothing to do with actual city business, as I had some personal things to do as far as getting easement agreements and things like that, but we've basically been working on this since August of 2024. I got pretty much everything turned into the city on the 14th of February. If I start to cry, I apologize, I don't do public speaking very well. And I got everything turned in. Beth and I have been back and forth, there were some things that I had to get to them. When anything was requested of me, I turned the information around in about 24 hours, unless it was a weekend. We have, I have left messages trying to get information so that I could get information to the city. I never received emails back, calls back, anything back. And I'm just having a real hard time with this right now. So we're looking at going on eight weeks of me trying to get a, you know, actively trying to get a building permit to build a home in Brandon. And I don't know what more I need to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Christine, oh Ivy, Ivy is my last name.
Miss Ivy, and what's the address, please?
It will be 3039 Lewis Wilson Drive.
Is that I-V-E-Y?
No, sir, no E, like the poison.
All right. And, well, let's just go ahead and talk about this right now. You may not want to stay for the whole board meeting. I believe I spoke to Sam about this, this is somewhat of an administrative policy because I understand you're asking for a grinder pump at this location for sewer because we don't have access to sanitary sewer?
That's my understanding. Now, if I had my druthers, I would put a treatment plant on the property, but I have already been told that I could not do that. So a grinder pump is what it, you know, is going to be. I've, I've got a quote out for that, and Carly sent me all the specifications, I sent it to my person for that. So he's working on that for me. Is that, I mean, is that what we're waiting on?
Well, the city has well over 400 grinder pumps scattered throughout the city, the majority of which are on Lewis Wilson, Windsor Ridge, few other places, the majority of which are on that side of town. But it's an extensive, big number that we get stuck with, and the board is well aware of this. I've had maps, tried to print one for you, board, just in case we had this conversation. So as far as the city's concerned, an administrative opinion is, we don't want grinder pumps, we want sanitary sewer. And we're about to begin a process of trying to convert areas like Windsor Ridge to sanitary sewer. It's just extremely expensive over time for the city to be responsible for those. So some years ago, the city came up with an idea, and I was on the board, and many of these board members were on the board at the time, that would tell a property owner, okay, you build this house, we're stamping that that you're always responsible for it. And there are a few houses that way. It places the board and public works and community development in a bad light, and this exact scenario came up three weeks ago, where we had a new resident that moved into Center Point, that's in Ward Six. The grinder pump went out, I can't remember the exact dollar figure, but I think it was something like $4,200 or something like that to replace it. And while that replacement was going on, the one across the street, the neighbor across the street, theirs went out, you know, because all these that were put in eons ago, we're the taxpayers, or the ratepayers, not taxpayers, the ratepayers are responsible for replacing all these. And we get stuck doing that a lot of times. So we had a situation where you got two neighbors across the street from each other, one, no, the city would not replace that one because it'd been replaced four, five years earlier, one across the street that we did go replace, you know? So that places the city in a very bad situation. We can't be bored in a, in a situation where we're picking and choosing who we're going to support in that. And we had these conversations in here multitude of times over the last 10 years trying to figure this out. So that's the situation of being maybe overly aggressive against grinder pumps and sanitary sewer, and going with sanitary sewer as opposed to grinder pumps to try to eliminate the number of those in the city.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I understand that.
Not your problem, no.
My understanding is that once we put this grinder pump in, that it is our responsibility to maintain, replace, repair, or whatever. So I am still having a little bit of a hard time with what you're telling me. We're not asking the city to maintain it, or replace it, or repair it.
Yeah, we can talk about this later, but the simplest way I can express that is, you might not always be in the house, and the person that comes behind you, or you change a board member out, and then all of a sudden somebody comes making a public pleading to the board, I've got a problem with my grinder pump, and it's yours from here to that sewer main, then all of a sudden, the city and the ratepayers are in a predicament of, we're taking care of everybody's grinder pump, which we are already. So it's a very expensive and extensive proposition for us to be taking over grinder pumps.
Okay.
So that's the dilemma that we're in right now in public works and community development.
So...
I think we've got two more like this, board, I think one is off of West Sunset, I don't remember where the third one is at. Anyway, so, board, this is, you know, this is one of those, you asked me to be diligent with these kind of things, and I'm not going to ask you to vote on this tonight, we can deliberate this, you can tell me later, or you can pause and think on it, but it's going to take a little more time. But the board's going to have to direct me to approve a grinder pump before I will approve a grinder pump, because of what I know it does to our sewer system.
So if I am never approved for a grinder pump, then I have a piece of property sitting in the middle of Brandon that I can never build on?
Well...
That's what you're...
We're working towards sanitary sewer so that we can avoid the expense of grinder pumps going forward in the future, because the ratepayers pay an enormous amount to try to upkeep those systems. And that's the dilemma that the board is faced with, of do we continue to allow grinder pumps when anybody comes along that wants to build somewhere? It's not overly complicated, you're just kind of caught in that crux. I would say that probably all that due diligence should have been done before you bought a piece of property, you know, to see what was available.
Well, I mean...
And, and board, I want to tell you, they've gone along, they bought a piece of property, didn't have access to, for easement, for utilities to get in, didn't have access for a driveway...
No, no, that's not true. We did have all that, it was in our, it's on my deed when I bought the property, that was all in my deed. The city just asked for me to have easement agreements drawn up with the two adjacent property owners, and I did that.
Okay. And, board, I want to tell you, in this particular case, those two property owners of the driveway that she would be driving through for this location happen to have both grinder pumps. So we're adding more grinder pumps to the system. So I, you know, I'd kind of like to need to know, I'm looking down here because they're in Ward Two, if you want to know, but you've got plenty of them in Ward Six, and some in Ward Five, and a handful in Ward Four, but they are a maintenance nightmare to keep up with.
Well, why could, I mean, is there any way to petition you guys to let me have a treatment plant? Because my site, my site plan person told me that the state would approve it if the city would approve it.
Okay.
And I mean, we've had soup moorings, the soil can handle it.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what would be the chances of me being, what do I need to do to try to get that process going?
All right, our city engineer is sitting here in the room right now, second row right here, his name is Matthew Miller.
I've met Mr. Matt Miller, yes, in fact, he and I...
And we will look, we will look at that, that'll be front page stuff to discuss first thing in the morning.
Okay.
This is not going to be a long, drawn-out thing, we'll get you an answer relatively quick.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because my biggest problem that I've had was, is communication. No one's returning my messages, no one's returning my emails, so a quick response would be greatly appreciated.
But, so we're clear that we understand it's the grinder pump and how to handle wastewater is the issue of the day.
Yes, sir. And whatever I need to do to even, like I said, if I could just get a treatment plant, my husband and I are more than willing to put a treatment plant in, and then that does fall on us to maintain.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is anyone else here this evening would like to make public comment? Board, I had a message from Mr. Gage Mackey from Winchester, who wanted to speak to you tonight concerning the installation of speed bumps in the neighborhood, because a car came by his house very quickly one day, he didn't like it, and I was going to give him the opportunity to speak to you as well. We go through this from time to time, and I would hope he would be here to speak to that issue tonight, maybe he'll be able to make the next meeting. All right, board, audience, anybody else would like to make public comment before we move on with the agenda? And please forgive the cough drop in my mouth, trying to keep the voice working. All right. All right, so under "O Business," approve the regular board meeting minutes of March 17th, 2025. Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, seconded by Ms. Sharon Womack, thank you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Now, the next one's a little bit confusing here. Consider amending the March 3, 2025 minutes that were adopted at the March 17, 2025 meeting by deleting section 6-2, which reads, approve an amphitheater sponsorship agreement with Bottle Tree Beverage Company for the 2025 concert season, and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
So, Mr. Mayor, it was included in the approval process and shouldn't have been because it was pulled from the agenda.
Okay, simple enough. Just correcting the minutes. Is there a motion to approve that correction? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker, seconded by Ms. Sharon Womack, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, under the mayor, start off with number one. Audience, this is a continuation, this is the third meeting we have worked on this. So, Ms. Gray, Lindses, thank y'all for being here tonight. Sam, you want to make the podium over here, just in case there are questions. Now, Gray, I made the board a copy, a hard copy of this, just to make it a little bit easier for everybody to look at, so the before and after, you've got that on all these locations that were in the land use plan, and we'll address questions, and any public comment that come up, may come up as we work through this. All right. Mr. Baker?
All right, Mayor, so this is a continuation of the public hearing that was initially opened on March the 3rd, and then continued to the March 17th board meeting, and now, and now continued to this board meeting. And what we're asking for first is, because Ms. Soots is going to finish up, but we do want to find out if there are any members of the audience here who have not been here before. First, let's get those that have not been here before, that would like to provide public comment with regard to the comprehensive plan. We certainly will get to those who are, have been here before but would like to make additional comment, but we want to hear from those who have not been here before with regard to the comprehensive plan. Anybody that'd like to come forward? Seeing no first timers, is there anyone here who has been here before who has any other particular comments that they'd like to make with regard to the comprehensive plan? Seeing none, is there anyone other than Ms. Soots and Mr. Sam who want to make or desire to make public comment with regard to the comprehensive plan? All right, floor is yours.
Thank you. So we're back again with the comprehensive plan, you've got these in front of you. I'm happy to walk you through them, or if you have a specific one that you want to address, we can just take it that way. All of these revisions have been made public on the city's website, they've been available for public review. I think at this point, we've hashed the comprehensive plan, its importance to the city, and understanding what this document is. Once again, this is not zoning. I just want to make that clear, that we are looking at a 20 to 25-year plan that has implications of zoning, it is what your zoning decision should be made on, but this is not zoning, and this does not change zoning when it is adopted.
So, Gray, I know you're ultimately prepared, but if you would, we could just go through, just go down the line, flipping through these, and that way, you know, we toggle something in somebody's mind they may want to speak to or ask a question about.
Absolutely. So we've discussed the Highway 471 at Warner Road before, that corner is commercial, community commercial. East Mark Drive was presented previously, that was changed to light industrial. US 80 at exit 59 on I-20, this one has been revised a couple of times. If you will follow three pages back to the April 7 final draft, the properties to the north along Grantsbury Parkway and Page MacDill, Tricam Bridge, that is showing community commercial and regional commercial. Then directly south at the interchange, you have residential estate in that corner between 80 and 20. That would be the east, excuse me, the western side of that interchange. To the south of that, you now have low-density residential. Moving to the east on the south side of the interstate...
April 7, 2025.
April 7.
US 80 and exit 59.
So you have, the light purple is neighborhood commercial, that's more of office buildings, maybe a small corner store, just real basic, walkable, friendly, neighborhood commercial, maybe a restaurant. And then from there, you transitioned to regional commercial, which would be a grocery store, a convenience store with fuel pumps, something of that nature that would be on that eastern side of that interchange.
What is the purple?
The dark purple, regional commercial. 18 at 468, this one was changed to show a little additional neighborhood commercial back on the March 3rd, when we first presented that. Highway 18 near West Sunset, this one is also one that has been revised a few times. If you'll flip through with me to the April 7 version of that, we are showing it with, on the south side, you have medium-density patio home and neighborhood commercial. On the north side, more on that north eastern corner, or the top right side of the paper, you will see it has patio home and medium-density, the neighborhood commercial has been removed from that section north of 18. Medium-density is going to be a smaller lot neighborhood. It's between, let me get my reference out. Mr. Baker could tell you, I was at Rankin County this morning, they're all running together on me today. So before I state anything, I want to make sure that I've...
It would be like our R-12, which is 12,000 square foot lots.
Just want to make sure I have y'all's numbers right before I look at it, yeah.
Will a Glenwick fit into that?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is that a consistent deal around the whole ward?
It is, it's more smaller lot development. Now, remember, when we make these recommendations, these are always minimum lot sizes, and you're certainly welcome to go larger than that. It would be about five houses per acre is what that number comes out to be. And that, that is fairly consistent with what you have to the south of that, right outside of the city, and also some of those surrounding neighborhoods.
Is that the yellow or the orange?
Yellow.
The yellow?
Yes, sir. The orange is patio home, so that would be closer to your Glenwick developments, where it's slightly smaller lots.
Yeah, the R-12 would be like a cornerstone, excuse me.
That area has infrastructure, has road access, it can accommodate a little higher volume.
Hey, on the April 7 final draft, what is the yellow?
Low-density, I'm sorry, medium-density.
And if light green is the...
Light green is going to be your residential estate. In this particular area, I'm going to call your attention to a slight difference. Inside the city limits, it's residential estate, so it's slightly lighter green. Outside of the city limits, it's defined as rural residential, and that's a slightly darker green shade, and you'll see that right along the city limits, right there, and that is the purpose of that distinction.
Which is our three-quarter acre lots.
Gray, are you basing these, excuse me, on our current code book? Is that what you're...
It's, it's kind of general off of that, you can't, we can take them, and I've got a sheet that correlates them closely to that, that may be helpful. Like, low-density is R-12, and medium-density is R-8, RM-8, patio home would be your RM-4. And so they fit within those generally.
So, I guess, I'm just confused, the whole process of this is, at some point, we adopt this land use plan, and then will we go back and redo the code book?
It would drive our zoning direction. So we would alter our zoning districts based on this land use plan that we would be adopting.
But you don't have to change...
I guess my question is, something that is medium-density now, like whatever, R-12 now, won't necessarily be the same thing once we adopt a new code book. So, so when you're saying, when you're saying R-12, well, I mean, R-12 makes sense because it's currently 12,000 square feet, a quarter acre, but when we go back and do that, R-12 could change to something else, not completely change, but it could be modified.
It could be modified.
A larger lot, or a smaller lot, or the square footage...
If you change...
Yes.
Not a smaller lot, though.
I would submit to you that if you adopted a comprehensive plan under what is perceived as the current R-12 planning, and then you decided later to make a substantive change to R-12, for whatever reason, you decided, smaller lots, bigger lots, whatever, you know what I'm saying? And, and you fundamentally changed what R-12 is, then I think you should go back and revisit your comp plan and say, well, wait a minute, we were going in that direction, but we decided that's not the right direction. And so you, you probably should back up. Now, if it's, if it's fundamentally, I'm not talking about the design, and I'm not talking about veneers, I'm not talking about basketball goals in the street, I'm not talking about that, but if it's fundamentally consistent with what you're planning, then you're good. But, but your comp plan is designed to say, we'd like to go here. And again, you don't have to make all those changes in your first run-at zoning amendment changes. You may come in and say, okay, that's our comp plan for the future, we want to focus on commercial X right now, or we want to focus on residential density Y right now. So it does give you, it's just the beginning of your planning, but all of that comes to mind.
But we don't have medium-density or...
No, and you wouldn't.
R-1, R-2, R-3, or whatever we used to have, and what a lot of people have, we have R-12, R-8, whatever.
Right.
So I guess, I would like to know, I would like to have an idea of what each one of those categories will be like before I approve this.
Well, but they can only do...
Because I think that needs to be updated as well. But I would like to know what it's going to be updated before I say, okay, this is what this land is, this land use plan is going to have.
Well, but, 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 but following now, what you're trying to do with the comp plan is to give you a path to those updates. And so if you're adopting this comp plan today, and this is what it looks like, then the changes that you propose for R-12, if this is R-12, kind of, should be consistent with your comp plan, or you need to go back and revisit your comp plan. And so you should have an idea based on what you're doing in your comp plan, where you intend to go on your zoning. Does that make sense? The comp plan leads the zoning, not the other way around.
Correct. Now, I will say, the reason we don't use like R-12 in your comp plan is because it's, it's more generally, it's more based on a general acreage, and it's a recommendation, it's not a very hard, fast, it cannot be less than 3.99. And that is to give that flexibility, and that's why we use terms like low-density, medium-density, high-density, and fit those classifications from the zoning within that.
Do you see that? So that gives you the...
What point will we decide what medium-density actually is, I guess?
Okay.
So, after adopting this, and this is based on these densities, I pulled your current zoning ordinance and compared to where they should line up within these general categories. So we could have a, a kind of an idea of what was there now, what are your acreages? Because your acreages are different than the county's acreage. So we looked at that, and that's what these are generally based on. And then from there, we adopt this, and then you can revisit zoning, should you decide to revisit zoning. You may get there and go, you know what, we like the zones, we just don't like the names. We like the sizes, we don't have an issue with that, we don't have an issue with the setbacks, we don't want to make those changes. It's more of changes to nomenclature.
So, may I, may I have a good, so your current zoning ordinance describes, for example, it describes R-12 as low-density, it describes R-8 as medium-density, it describes R-8 suburban mixed, RM-8, as a moderate density, and all of those terms are defined in your zoning ordinance. Your RM-4 townhouse is, is described as a moderate to high-density. And so you've already kind of described them here. What Gray's telling you is, is your comp plan is not going to pigeonhole you, okay? It's not designed or intended to do that. And so you will have the flexibility to come back within a moderate to medium to light density to define your terms as you decide to go on. You can continue to do that. Does that help at all? And for example, like R-8 suburban even has high-density in the title, so with regard to your residential, you've, you've said what those are.
That's your books now.
Gray, there are several people in the audience, would you mind going over the US 80 at exit 59 one more time, just to be sure?
Absolutely, and then we'll proceed on from there. So let me describe this the best I can directionally, and maybe it'll help if I kind of show it to an extent. So if you're traveling east along Highway 80 approaching exit 59, to the north, to your left, is going to be residential estate. You've got low-density, kind of in the legacy area, and then it transitions to residential estate right at the interchange. On the south side, you will have low-density residential. Just past the entrance ramp... Just past the entrance ramp, the eastbound entrance ramp, on the south side of I-20, it will be neighborhood commercial, which is more of your very office commercial, professional buildings, neighborhood stores, small corner stores. We're not looking for fuel pumps, not looking for big retail establishments, just fairly small businesses there. A good example of that would be what is at Highway 80 in Lewis Wilson, at the dead end of Lewis Wilson and Highway 80, those retail, um, office buildings there. It's a pink light purple, yes, sir. Then the darker purple on the south side is your regional commercial. That is your heavy auto-friendly retail. That's going to be your grocery stores, your home improvement stores, those type things. They front on the interstate here. On the north side of I-20, between 80 and I-20, you have general commercial and highway commercial, or regional commercial, in that area. And then on the north side of 80, along Page McDill, headed to Tricklebridge, in the Grants Ferry Parkway area, you have regional commercial and general commercial that leads to industrial. Yes, sir. Old Highway 471, those establishments, we're looking at a light industrial classification there. Old Brandon at Cross Gates Boulevard, behind the Lutheran Church, or the existing apartments, and those would be shown as multifamily, to maintain that. Highway 80 at Edgewood Crossing, this is going to be, at the Dollar, the Dollar Store there on Highway 80, that would be general commercial. The northern parcel of Shallow Parkway and Highway 80, I believe that's Shallow Parkway, and Highway 80, at the end of Glenwick IV, would also be general commercial. That matches your current zoning ordinance.
Excuse my voice. So each of those locations were points of discussion that came up with folks as we went through this and before the board every time. I believe sometimes there may be an audience or two member here that is not familiar with you, though. So you are an educated city planner. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir. I hold AICP designation, which is a professional planning.
AICP. Help me out with acronym.
American Institute of Certified Planners. I have to maintain credentials and continuing education, in addition to my general education.
All right. So I appreciate you being here. So, Board, do you have any questions? Detail? Would you like to act tonight? You want to continue? I know Gray's been here three meetings in a row, Mr. Baker.
Just one thing. For the audience that's here, for those that are interested, having heard the comments by the city's expert planner, does anyone desire to make any additional comments with regard to the comprehensive plan? And I assume it is the recommendation of the planning commission and the expert that the comprehensive plan, as revised and presented tonight, need the comprehensive plan that is adopted by the board, by ordinance? Is that correct?
That's right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I prepared an ordinance, Mayor, that would do so if the board is inclined to do that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any further comment or question? Board? Thank you, Gray. All right. Then we shall close the public hearing.
Yes.
Public hearing is closed, is that right?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, public hearings closed.
I would just like to note, as part of the public hearing, that all matters presented at the March 3rd and the March 17th, days of this hearing, together with anything presented at this public hearing, are incorporated here in my reference and appended to the minutes of the public hearing.
All right. So the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve the comprehensive plan by ordinance here that Mr. Baker has prepared and presented?
And if the board is inclined to do that, I would ask that, first, incorporate in the comments and matters presented at the public hearing, and based on the recommendation of the city's community development department and planning experts of the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District, and finding that based on all attended facts and circumstances, the comprehensive plan as presented is consistent with MCA Section 17-1-1, and will protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizenry, and will promote and protect property values and the tax base, and for all other reasons that such comprehensive plans are reasonable and necessary, that that be incorporated into the motion.
All right. This is a living document, Board. If you want to bring it up next year and change it again, it's recommended in state law that you revisit this at least every five years. But it's a living thing. You can change it anytime you want and go forward. Not overly complicated.
Mayor, is there any way we can get, you know, you gave us a large map
Uh-huh.
The first time, that draft. It would help me out a lot if I had a map, and then instead of just color code, type in, write in something that's-
That's on there. She's fine today. I can email it to you, but I can, I can print each one of you
It'd be easier to look at-
The updated map.
Yeah.
Yeah? Sorry, just kind of ran out of time today. But I can fold that up and put it in your box, and you'll have it. That's the future land use plan, is all it is. It's not zoning. And we've had some people get confused about that. Yeah. So, got to be careful with those designations, too. How many of you would like a big wall copy of that? Everybody? We'll just make one for the whole board. All right? Okay. Does that hinder you from wanting to act tonight? Or would you like to have that in hand before you-
No, that's what I'm going to vote on. I just want to-
Yeah, I know. Okay.
I would also like some assurances that we want to update, but, kind of, to match what we're doing ASAP, though.
All right. I don't know how I can give you those assurances. Gray, you want to help me out with that? What would you define as assurances? Next week? Next month? Assurances as to win?
So, that would be a separate contract?
Yes.
And we certainly could entertain that. I will encourage you, as Mr. Baker cites the state code, zoning regulations are based upon comprehensive plans and must be based upon comprehensive plans. So after completing one, it's certainly the right time to address that, if you so choose.
All right.
But that's a board decision.
You will have us, something put before the board as an agenda item, as a contract, to review and update our zoning to follow up.
Right. But understand, it's not her, I mean, it's their, it's their work to do based on your direction to give.
Got it. That's correct.
Okay. And so their job as experts, their subject matter expert is to say, I don't know about that. That sounds, that's consistent with zoning planning. This is a discretionary call on your part, go ahead. You know, so they're going to be the catchers, y'all going to be the pitchers. That's all they can do, so.
I realize they're diff, I guess my concern is, I want to clarify what medium density is, what neighborhood commercial is, in the code book, moving forward to match the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And I think what we have now needs a lot of updating and clarifying.
It certainly, it, it, now, I mean, I don't know, this was initially adopted in what, when did, because-
Balance from-
No, this one's not that old.
That one's 15 or 16.
It's 16.
I believe it was 16.
But it's, it certainly has had some changes over time. It certainly has. We have done a lot of work on it, and it's a little uncomfortable sometimes because our zoning designations are not kind of typical. But remember, when this comp plan was done, it was, it was really, I mean, it was a lot of charrettes, and it was a lot of work. But things become outdated. That's what we're here to do, is to get you, get the charrettes, get the whatever, however you want to do it, to get it set up. But you can't, it's the chicken or the egg, but in this case, you know what comes first is the comp plan.
Okay. And I'll just give you an example. Okay, we're talking about medium density.
Right.
All of us in here, I guess, assume R-12 is medium density.
It's low density.
No, it's low density.
I mean, low density. Okay. But R-12 is low density?
Yes.
Quarter of an acre?
Yes.
We have two low-density districts for residential.
I mean, that's exactly what I'm talking about. We don't, I mean, I'm thinking medium density is one thing, and y'all are saying it's another. I want that clarified in the code book to match the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I think it doesn't-
It's listed, each district, it shows, for residential, it shows low density, medium, moderate, moderate to high. That's how it's designated now, and it's, I mean, it's listed in the book, but I don't disagree with you. I think we need to revisit each district, see how we want to, any issues that we've had. And I know I've got a list of issues that we run into with each one, and I'd be happy to share that with you. And we could individually talk about it, and then, you know, bring it to the board publicly. We could talk about each one of your districts, or each one of your wards and the districts within.
All right. So I'll have a large land use proposed map for you in your mocks by the end of the week. I'll send you an email when it's in your box. You'll have that wall size to look at. And we'll expect a potential contract from you for the next board meeting. Our next one is April 21st, and we'll put it on the agenda to have a, to continue the zoning process. Mr. Baker, you want to say something?
I was just going to say one other thing. Aldman Vincent, when you look on your zoning district conversion,
Mm-hmm.
You can look at our former districts and look what the new districts were, and you can kind of, we've actually got those old zoning designations as well, so you can, you can see the consistency or inconsistency there. We can get you that information.
And Gray, when you get to that, you might have three columns. The first one, what it went to, and what it is now, just to carry it over time.
Absolutely. I will not be here Monday, the 21st. We will be in, we'll be in Biloxi. Just want to-
As long as we got that contract on the agenda.
Yeah. We have our statewide conference that week, so I will not be here.
Can we go ahead and say that, once we receive this plat, that we will set up and have an extensive work session where we can look at this and discuss it?
Sure.
Rather than just a 10-minute public hearing?
Are you talking about for the comp plan?
Yes.
Well, we've had, this is the third public hearing we've had on it, and, I mean, all right, so, all right, I'll pause. So, on the 21st, no, no, on the 21st, I'll set up a 5 o'clock meet, I know you won't be here, though, so it'll have to be the first board meeting in May. We will set up a public, a work session, first board meeting in May. Okay? Can y'all be here? And we'll have an hour-long work session to answer any questions. By that time, you will have had the large wall maps for five or six weeks, and develop any questions, any specific questions. Mary Ann, you jodding us down, we'll have a work session, the first board meeting in May, to address finalizing the comp plan. So, all right.
Is the traffic plan, transportation plan, part of the comprehensive plan?
Well, you've already gotten that. You've already received that.
I know.
It is. It should be.
But we, to my knowledge, we haven't discussed it much.
We're looking at land use right now, but is-
That's why I'm asking. Is that part of it?
Yes.
When we adopt the comprehensive plan, is the transportation
Yes.
Plan embedded in that?
Yes.
There were, there were two transportation plans that were being discussed. One, back in December, I believe it was, we had conversations about a very specific transportation plan. And then the one that is included in your comprehensive plan is much more general. Again, we go for generalities here. We circle an intersection and say, this is a known intersection that needs improvements. I'm not going to get into how those improvements need to be made. That's, that's for traffic engineers, not for me. But we do address things like, where should bike lanes, what roadways should bike lanes be considered, and expansion of roadways in the comprehensive plan. That is part of the comprehensive plan.
All right. All right, Board? All right. So our target's the first board meeting in May to potentially adopt the comprehensive plan. Still, go ahead and get me that contract, and once the comp plan is finalized, we can begin work on the zoning.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a favor?
Yes, sir.
In May, when you're there, can we use the screen here so you can, it's kind of difficult when you're having this, and you're pointing, and I'm looking, trying to, it'd be easier if we had a bigger screen where you could have a-
We'll have it on your screen in front of you.
We'll pull up an interactive viewer and a map, so everybody can see it. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. So the public hearing's closed. We'll move on through the agenda. Mary Ann, please remind me to get those printed, or, Carly, remind me to get with Tim in the morning, get those printed for everybody. All right. So we'll begin at number two through six. Number two, consideration for the two items below, that both documents are necessary for the implementation of the Community Development Block Grant Emerald Street Sewer Extension Project, request permission to publish the Fonzie. That's a finding of no significant impact. Number two is authorize mayor to execute environmental letter known as Park 58 Attachment. Number two, three, consideration to approve a 2025 rate schedule for professional services from Neil Schaefer for future professional service agreements. Number four is consideration to approve a 2025 rate schedule for professional services from Pickering Engineering for future professional services. Number five is consider adopting an ordinance proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. And number six, consideration to hire Gail Clark as a box office ticket sales employee, part-time employee effective April the 8th, 2025. So she would fill in when we have shows coming online. Any question on two through six? Motion to approve those items?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. David Ferris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Okay. Ms. Mary Ann?
May I take these items together?
Yes, please.
Consideration to approve professional services agreements for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other law form-related purposes. Authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures. And there are five of them. The first one is Sticks. The second one is Tammy Nielsen. Number three is Breaking Benjamin Stained. Number four is Olay 60 Artist Contract. And the last one is Fox and Feed Contract. Number two, consideration to accept the fiscal year 2024 continued disclosure statement as prepared by Butler Snow and to pay their invoice of $3,000. Number three, consideration to approve a Brandon Amphitheater sponsorship agreement for the 2025 concert season and authorize the mayor to execute the same, Bottletree Beverage Company. Number four, request permission to surplus approximately 55 fluorescent light fixtures and five wall scotch lights, and authorize the sale of the same on GovDeals, as they are no longer of use to the city. Number five, consideration to approve docket of claims and addendum for April the 7th, 2025, Fox Everett Claims, released on March 20th and April 3rd, 2025, electronic fund transfers for March 2025.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there a motion to approve one through five from the city clerk? Motion by Mr. Lou Culker, second by Mr. Jack Crane. Any discussion on any of those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board.
Good evening.
You got your gallon of water over there?
I know, it's a lot. Could I take items one through eight? Okay.
Baker, you good on one, two, eight?
No. Any other numbers?
Go ahead. One through eight.
One through eight. Number one, consideration to approve a professional-
Number one, consideration to approve a professional services agreement with Ambiance Landscape for mowing and string cutting at the Brandon Amphitheater and along a portion of Market Road, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number two, consideration to declare an emergency, the replacement of the traffic signal cabinet on Highway 18 at I-20 eastbound due to a traffic accident. Approve invoice M-2025.32 in the amount of $21,539 from Lewis Electric, and authorize payment of the same. Number three, consideration to approve utility adjustment approvals and denials pursuant to the memo. Number four, consideration to approve pay request six in the amount of $75,173.70 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Burnham Road Waterline Improvements Project, and authorize payment of the same. Number five, consideration to award the bid in the amount of $480,480 to ERS Incorporated for the Richland Creek Stone Bridge NRCS EWP ditch project as the lowest and best bid received. Number six, spread on the minutes check number 112749 in the amount of $13,673.33 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for overage paid on final quantities for the Highway 80 signal improvement, Stone Gate and Wood Gate. Number seven, consideration to declare an emergency, the repairs to the vacuum excavator. Approve invoice 00353477 in the amount of $6,520.50 from Vermeer Mid-South, and authorize payment of the same. And number eight, consideration to declare an emergency, the rebuild of the spare pump for Provence Park Lift Station. Approve invoice 7394 in the amount of $5,202.74 from Harvey Services, and authorize payment of the same.
Alright, Ms. Carly. Is there a motion to approve one through eight? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams? Second by Mr. Jared Crane. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Alright, Ms. Carly.
Alright. Item number nine, consideration to award the concrete construction services bid for FY25 as follows. These bids will be effective immediately through September 30th. Concrete curb and gutter, zero to 199 linear feet, will be awarded to NJ Farms as the lowest invest bid received, 120 feet or greater. Award to Warren Building Company. Concrete sidewalks, zero to 199 square feet, award to NJ Farms. 200 and higher, award to Warren Building Company. Concrete drainage structures per cubic yard, award to NJ Farms. And concrete driveway and roadways per cubic yard, award to NJ Farms. Number 10, permission to allow Holland Sealcocks and Robert Brent King to travel and attend the 2025 Rural Water Annual Conference in Biloxi on May 27th through 30th for water and sewer CEU hours. Number 11, consideration to approve change order one in the amount of $30,746.21 from Thornton Construction Company for the Cornerstone Grants Ferry Parkway Waterline Extension Project pursuant to the memo, and authorize the mayor to execute the same. Number 12, consideration to award the quote in the amount of $46,022.50 to NJ Farms for the Market Road Multi-Use Path Extension Project as the lowest and best quote received. Number 13, permission to advertise for bid, one new onsite generator for Apple Ridge Lift Station. This item was budgeted in FY25. Number 14, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill Construction Company as listed for non-emergency repairs at the FY25 commodity bid prices, and authorize payment of the same. Number 15, consideration to approve the following invoices from Hemp Hill as listed for emergency repairs at FY25 general construction commodity bid pricing, and authorize payment of the same. Number 16, consideration to award the bid in the amount of $1,533,103.75 to Thornton Construction Company for the Grants Ferry Parkway Shared Use Path LPA Project as the lowest invest bid received. And number 17, permission to develop plans and advertise for bid, the Stribbling Lane Distill Boulevard Improvements Project 2025.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Carly, nine through 17. Matthew, are we gonna be able to add that extension on Highway 18 to turn in there with that? Yeah, we've already got an M dot permit for that, don't we? Board, so that's the turn lane into check off of 18. We'd like to lengthen that at the same time. If you haven't been on Stribbling Lane, it's about, well, it is destroyed, it's not about destroyed. They're hauling all that dirt out and in for the hotel's gonna go. We probably will have an official groundbreaking 14th, 15th, or 16th. Did you get anything definitive yet? The 15th. So, board, if you would, just make a note somewhere on the calendar, on the 15th, we'll have an official groundbreaking ceremony there at the Home to Suites on Stribbling Lane. Alright, so, Mr. Baker, on number 17. How do we want to phrase that, Matthew? Permission to develop plans and advertise for bids on Stribbling Lane, Distill Boulevard improvements, and existing turn lane off of Highway 18 into Distill?
We can make it real lengthy, but Stribbling, the turn lane's going into Distill. So, I was just gonna say Stribbling, Distill, as Carly had it stated here. I was trying to keep it simple. As long as everybody understands the scope and is good with the scope, without getting overly complicated on a project name, just call it Stribbling. That's right, as long as y'all know what's involved.
Alright, good, thank you. Alright, is there a motion to approve nine through 17? Motion by Mr. David Ferris? Second by Mr. Lou Coker? Questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Go on, six, wait a minute. Okay, well, you want to say, you want to talk about it? Okay. Well, the rest of the board and the audience might even know, but that's an NPO project that is a 75-25 grant, so it's 75 federal dollars, 75% federal and 25% local. Alright, so, I'm gonna have to break out 16, if you want, if you want to know, so we're gonna do- 16. Okay? You good, for the record? Okay. Alright, okay, all in favor, say aye. Oh, yeah, well, I'm trying to make the numbers here, alright, so. Alright, so it's on all of them, 7-0, except 16, which is 6-1. Okay. Alright, got it. Alright, Ms. Carly, you done?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I've got four items, we need to strike number two, because I've got to go to a preservation boot camp in Jackson on the 23rd and 24th. So, it's just one, three, and four, I'd like to take them individually, if possible.
Who's gonna strike?
Strike number two. No, I've got to go to a Mississippi Department of Archives and History Preservation Boot Camp in Jackson.
Okay.
Alright, number one. Set public hearing for April 21st, 2025, case number 25-004, conditional use application to operate a bed and breakfast at 1012 Stonehenge Drive, parcel number H9M-11-720.
Number three? You just said it, you're just setting a public hearing, that's all you're voting on.
That's right.
Alright, got a motion to approve, Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Lou Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Alright.
Number three. Consideration to adopt the final plat for Collier Crossing Subdivision Phase Two.
Is there a motion to approve that final plat? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent? Second by Mr. Harry Williams? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, and then number four.
Consideration to approve a development review application submitted by Manning and Manning Construction to construct a 1834 square foot men's clinic. And this is at 106 High Point Court. It's a development review. Commercial property, it's something that we, it's part of our ordinance. It's just a general approval of a project.
But they still have to go through all those.
Yep, that's right, mhm.
Alright. Is there a motion to approve that review application? Motion by Mr. Chris Vincent, second by Mr. Jared Crane. All in favor, say aye. Thank you, board. Alright, chief?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have five items, can I take them together?
Yes, sir.
Alright, number one, accept the resignation of Andrew Leverett as a police officer for the City of Brandon effective April 3rd, 2025. Number two, request permission for dispatcher Lawanda Lucian to travel to the following places for training. Collins, Mississippi, to participate in the NECI Domestic Violence Class on April 8th. Collins, Mississippi, to participate in the NECI Legal Liability Class on April 15th. And Hazelhurst, Mississippi, to participate in the Suicide Prevention Class on April 21st and 22nd. Number three, request permission for Sergeant Jared Bacon and Officer Palmer Robbins to travel to DeSoto County, Mississippi, on May 19th, 2025, to attend the Glock Armor Course. Number four, request permission for Sergeant Jerry Spell to travel to Oxford, Mississippi, to participate in the FBI LITA Executive Leadership Institute on June 1st through 6th, 2025. And number five, request permission for Captain Brian Owell, Sergeant Connor Smith, Officer Cody Moles, and Officer Palmer Robbins to travel to Bay St. Louis, Mississippi, on June 8th through 13th, 2025, to attend the Mississippi Law Enforcement Officers Association Training Conference.
Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve those five items? Motion by Mrs. Sharon Womack? Second by Mr. David Ferris? Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you, board.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Take them all together?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll break out the monthly report here. Weather sirens, same status, 18, active, two knot. Location is Greenbrook Armory, 468. Power calls, 199, average response time, 10:19. Fire department, 258 calls. Average response times, 5:48, fire, 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 who, sorry, can't talk. Five firefighter calls, 152 EMS, 23 recs, NBA, other. Training hours, 766, inspections, 30, and physical hours is one. Question?
Thank you, and Brian's sick, right?
Sir.
Brian's out sick.
Brian's out sick. I'm halfway there, and I think Jerry's, I'm not sure about Jerry. He was running fever and everything this morning, so I'm not sure what's going on, but we, I guess we've been together all week, last week, same places. Number one, request consideration to travel to Phoenix City, Alabama, to participate in the Mississippi Fire Academy Surface and Swift Rider Training Class, April 11th, 2025, May the 14th, 2025, for Captain Travis Khan. Request permission, consideration for Battalion Chief Eric Stringer to travel to Pablo, Colorado, and to participate in an Alternative Fuels and Flammable Instant Response Management Class, April 6th to April 12th, 2025. As y'all know, you can tell by the dates, he's already on, already there. Consideration to hire Josh Dugay as a part-time firefighter, EMT, as rate paid per memo. And number four, request your consideration to apply for the 2025 Homeland Security Grant. Authorize Mayor Lee and Chief Roberts to execute all documents.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve those four items? Motion by Mr. Lou Coker? Second by Mr. Jared Crane? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign?
And that was a free class, everything's covered. No, no costs to the city other than his salary.
Thank you much. Alright, board, would like to retire to determine and assess it being executive session. Motion by Mrs. Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Lou Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? Thank you. Audience, if you would, step out of the room, and we'll be as expedient with time as we can.
There was, the board voted to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters involving event services and discuss potential litigation involving the enforcement of section 1471 of your animal control ordinance. In executive session, there was one vote to authorize the mayor to do take certain action with regard to a personnel matter. That's it, Mr. Mayor. I do believe that there's an added item that the, that the, that the board would like to consider. Mayor, that would be a resolution to petition the Department of Revenue to permit sales by on-premises permittees located within your municipality during extended hours as presented.
All right. Need a bubble on that?
Motion.
You got a motion, Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Lou Coker. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Need a motion to adjourn until our next board meeting?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir.
Who's, who's second?
Lou.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. 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 Mayor.